Okay, well, welcome to the Bellevue City Council's special meeting at the virtual meeting of May 4th, 2020. Welcome to all the council members and staff, and thank you for joining us virtually today. We'll start with roll call.
Mayor Robinson.
I'm here.
Deputy Mayor Nguyen House.
Here.
Councilmember Barksdale.
Here.
Councilmember Lee.
Yeah.
Councilmember Robertson.
Present.
Councilmember Stokes.
Here.
And Councilmembers on.
Here.
Thank you.
Great. So this week is National Police Week, and we have a lot of appreciation for the, our police force in Bellevue. They've done a remarkable job, and they're working very hard right now during this time. And it is National Police Week. So we're going to read a proclamation to celebrate our police force, and I have Councilmember Barksdale doing that tonight.
Okay, thank you, Mayor. All right. Whereas there are approximately 800,000 law enforcement officers serving in communities across the United States, including the dedicated members of the Bellevue Police Department. And whereas there have been 58,866 assaults against law enforcement officers in 2018, resulting in approximately 18,005 injuries. And whereas, since the first recorded death in 1791, nearly 22,000 law enforcement officers in the United States have made the ultimate sacrifice and been killed in the line of duty. And whereas, the names of these dedicated public servants are engraved on the walls of the National Law Enforcement Officers Memorial in Washington DC. And whereas, the service and sacrifice of all officers killed in the line of duty will be honored during the National Law Enforcement Officers Memorial Fund's 32nd Annual Candlelight Vigil on May 13. And whereas, May 15 is designated as Peace Officers Memorial Day in honor of all fallen officers and their families, and US flags should be flown at half-staff. And whereas, law enforcement officers are a vital part of our communities, standing ready to deal with emergencies and risk their own safety and health and the execution of their duties to protect the public every day. And whereas, law enforcement officers continue to diligently perform essential work on the frontlines alongside dedicated first responders and healthcare workers to respond to the current public health emergency caused by the COVID-19 pandemic. Now, therefore, on behalf of Lynn Robinson, Mayor of the City of Bellevue, Washington, and on behalf of its city council, do I do hereby proclaim the week of May 10 through 16, 2020, as National Police Week in Bellevue, and encourage all residents and businesses to recognize and express appreciation for our law enforcement officers, for their honorable profession in public service to us all, especially as they respond to the current public health emergency and continue to protect our communities while on the frontlines of the COVID-19 pandemic.
Thank you, Councilmember Barksdale. Chief Mylett, did you have something you wanted to say at this point? Is that why you're here?
Thank you, Mayor. I wish we were all together so I could take the proclamation from you directly, but I want to thank you and the council for acknowledging what President Kennedy signed into law in 1962, designating May 15 as Peace Officers Memorial Day, and the week in which it falls is Police Week. Mayor, in December of 1991, the National Law Enforcement Officers Memorial in Washington DC was dedicated. The hope at that time, and even today, was that we would never, ever have to add additional names to the wall. But unfortunately, the country has added many names to the wall, and I think we will at some point in the near future have to add additional panels to the wall in order to accommodate additional officers who lose their lives while protecting and serving the public. Mayor, this council has always supported the men and women of the Police Department and the Fire Department. And I know I speak on behalf of all of us when I want to say thank you. We are truly blessed to serve in a community like Bellevue, and our hope is that we will get through COVID-19 without any losses, any further losses. So again, thank you very much for acknowledging the work of law enforcement in our country and certainly in Bellevue.
Well, thank you. We all send you a virtual handshake.
Thank you, ma'am.
Okay, we're moving on to approval of our agenda. Do we have a motion to approve the agenda?
I move to approve the agenda.
Second.
Thank you. So I'm going to stop right here for a moment. I know Councilmember Lee got cut off in the middle of making his comments last, in our last meeting. And so I wanted to give him a chance to finish up what he had been trying to say at that time. Councilmember Lee, do you have, are you prepared to finish your comments?
Sure, sure, I am. I was thinking that maybe this could be added at the time we do the consent calendar, when we approved the minutes.
Oh, okay, I'm sorry.
It could be done here, no problem, but we can wait if you want to. Yeah, why don't we just wait as we get to the consent calendar?
That was a preamble to something later in the agenda, sorry.
Thank you.
I was wondering why it wasn't written in here. Okay, well, all those in favor approving the agenda, say aye.
Aye.
Me opposed? Okay, the agenda is approved, thank you. So, city clerk, I don't think we have any written communications, but I will check with you again.
There aren't, we did not receive any written communications, fortunately.
Okay, thank you. And now we're on to the report of our city manager, Mr. Miyaki, love to get an overview of our Bellevue School District's response to COVID-19. And this request was in response to Councilmember Stokes' request to learn more about what the school district is doing during this time.
Thank you, Mayor Robinson and council members. As you mentioned, tonight, we are fortunate to have Dr. Ivan Durand, the Bellevue School District Superintendent, join us this evening to share with us how the Bellevue School District has responded to the many challenges arising out of COVID. Just by way of background, Dr. Durand has an extensive background in education and has served as the Bellevue School District Superintendent since July of 2017. That's been almost three years, and he's accomplished quite a bit. And we have worked extensively with Dr. Durand, meaning the city has, and has worked on a number of projects with him as well as the district. Those of us that have worked with him and have described him as just a great collaborator, as well as a fierce supporter of kids regardless of their social and economic background, and as well as an inspirational community leader. And with that intro, I will turn the table over to Dr. Durand.
Right. Good evening, Mayor, council members, and city manager, Mr. Miyaki. It's wonderful to be here tonight, and definitely agree that I wish it was face-to-face. I was sitting at, wish I was sitting at that table. I mean, we'll look you all in the eyes, but this health crisis has us doing some things that are not normal. And so I'll do my best to try to give you guys an update on where we are with COVID-19 and the work that we've been doing over the last several weeks. And maybe a little bit of a glimpse to around where we're thinking we're going to be going. Next slide, please. So just as a reminder, you know, we are in the middle of a strategic plan that we launched, you know, after I came to Bellevue and, you know, spent time listening to the community and finding out what was working, what wasn't working, what were some next steps. So, you know, our strategic plan, our vision, mission, our values have really been at the forefront of our response to COVID-19 and what we're working to do to ensure that we are supporting, you know, all of our students and our families. So this still is something that we have committed to ensuring that we are just doing our best to, to meet the needs of our community. But our strategic plan is our guide throughout all the work that we're trying to accomplish. Next slide. I dropped this on just a little personal piece here because I think where we've experienced with COVID-19, you know, and all of your experience, COVID-19 has been very different. And, you know, I would like to think that this is not the new normal, but I think I'm wondering, you know, if it will be in the future. Just a few pictures here, you know, my wife is a consultant, educational consultant, she works from home. And so switching over to this virtual remote work environment, you know, something that she's really used to. So, you know, I've had to finally set up a desk and never thought I would be, you know, leading a district as a virtual superintendent, you know, but it's been amazing, I mean, how much work we can get accomplished, whether it's through Zoom teams or other ways. Some of the bright spots in this is that my son Mateo, who's 15 months now, we may hear him throughout this presentation. So just for a warning, he says about 30 minutes before he goes down. But one of the blessings has been able to go up and see him, you know, throughout the day during my breaks. And about a week ago, he started walking. So it was just a really, just a blessing to watch him go from being, you know, a baby now to a toddler. And then the last picture that's on there, those of you who are familiar with Seward Park, that's just not a normal scene. You know, I run there pretty regularly with Mateo, but it's very rare that you actually don't see anybody walking around that park. And so it's very strange times that we're in right now. So we've just really been doing our best to try to do it. This Twitter post, I just thought was a really fun way to think about this when this all first started. Sarah Stret, you know, is author of the book. And just loved how she put this on there when she was talking to her son around, it's important for you to get out of bed and enjoy any classes. It may help you focus and retain information in general, just good manners. Next slide. So on March 13, you know, we received guidance from the Office of Superintendent Public Construction Guidance from the state, you know, and they recommended that, you know, I actually didn't recommend, they required all schools to close, and under the governor's order. We had already made plans to close the day before on March 12. We had been waiting for some guidance to come from the state. We weren't sure what was going to happen, but we had already been in the works to close because we were seeing high numbers of absentee rates, especially with our staff. On the Friday before we closed, we actually had about 22% of our staff absent, many of them, you know, at that time, being very vulnerable. We just didn't want to take any chances or risk. So we were already leaning into some of the work. But when the state provided guidance to us, these were really the key things that they asked us to do, focus on meals, nutrition for families, childcare, our seniors, think about learning opportunities for our students and our adults, and it really makes sure that we kept all of our employees whole. So these have been some of the guidance that we have been thinking about in guiding our work. Next slide, please. Along with that is basically the priorities that we had focused on. So we took those priorities that the state gave us, but we also added on a little bit more to really be thinking about our students experiencing poverty, special education students, and multilingual learners. From the very beginning of this whole process, we knew that, you know, it was going to be very challenging to provide, you know, an equitable experience for all of our students, but we did not believe that it was a reason not to provide some type of remote learning experience for our students. And I think that was some of the reasons why there were some hesitancy to do some closure in the very first place. But we definitely have been taking that and leading forward that. I would also add that we have really been considering supporting our students, some well-being, both, you know, from the social, emotional, and mental health. It's been probably one of our top things over even academics at this time, because some of the experiences that we have seen during this have just been really compelling for us to think differently about how we're supporting our students. And then finally, we just have been really thinking about really ensuring that we are providing meaningful learning experiences for all of our students. So I am just going to go through now to share some highlights in these areas and the work that we've been doing over the last several weeks. Next slide. So one of our, one of our big areas has been in the area of nutrition. And I'm not going to read all this for you, but we have really just been thinking creatively around how we can provide, you know, meals to our students and our families. One of the first things that we had to work ourselves through was breaking away from some of the federal guidelines that, that we often have to follow. And our state and governor have been really great in supporting those areas. And so we have eased up some of those requirements. And now any of our students can basically go and pick up a meal or have a meal delivered to them. And so we now have students who will come either at the pickup sites or have stuff delivered. They pick up a lunch for that day, and then they get a breakfast for the next day. We now have six locations, what we call a grab and go for the pickups. And we're also, also delivering to 33 locations. Some families have the opportunity to actually go and do a preorder, and then we actually will deliver them to different places throughout the city. We had the highest number of meals served last week, but you can see that over this time, we have served over 68,000 meals to our students. And now we are averaging 2,800, over 2,000 meals a day. We know we're impacting well over 1,000 of our students on a daily basis. Next slide. We have also really keyed in on childcare. This was an area where, you know, Bellevue is very unique as a school district because our early learning department provides throughout the year before and after school care. So we had a team of people ready to go. And so when the governor asked us to provide childcare for first responders, healthcare workers, essential workers, and students experiencing homelessness, we were ready to go. We had already had a plan in place, and so we were prepared to serve, you know, a large number of students at four locations. If you guys remember, right after that closure, the governor came out and then closed down some of the other essential services or other businesses and shut down restaurants and bars. And we know quite a few number of our families rely on that area of work. And so we did not have the high need that we were anticipating. So we are currently running one location, and we serve approximately 100 students at Stevenson Elementary School. And I'll just also just make a note that the Boys and Girls Club have been really central partners for us during this time. You know, they have a couple of their locations open, and they've been doing their best to really try to provide the best services to their students, and then we're supporting them with nutrition in this process also. Next slide. Technology has been another area for us that we have really have had to think differently and work across our organization to ensure that we are really meeting the needs of our families in the best way. Again, we are fortunate in Bellevue because we have had a one-to-one laptop program in place for our secondary students. So our sixth grader through 12th grade students already have laptops. We had quite a few of laptop carts and some other tablet devices at the elementary level. But we have been able to distribute almost 3,000 laptops and over 400 hotspots to our students and our families. Even though as students at the secondary level had laptops, they didn't necessarily have the Wi-Fi access. And so the hotspots have really been a big benefit for them. We are also providing onsite technology support, you know, following all the physical distance guidelines. So this is a picture you can see over at Smamish High School, where you have people spread out, but families and students can come in if they need some help with their technology, help with the program, any, any support that they need, we're able to provide it. We're also providing hotline support in multiple languages so that we can ensure that we don't have any language barriers getting in the way of that work. And then this quote is actually from our technology team, and I just love it because this has really been their attitude throughout this whole process. You know, "The walls of our physical buildings do not define us. It is you, us, our team working together that have made a huge difference." So they have really been leading the way in that area. We have transportation involved in this work. We have some of our hourly staff involved in this work, and we're really trying to make sure that we're doing our best job to meet the needs of our families. We have seen a really big need for Wi-Fi access. And I know I've talked with Brad numerous times around this. And so I know the city has been involved in trying to think about how we could possibly bring other companies into this conversation. But, you know, adding hotspots is not a long-term solution. It's expensive. You know, it's not as easy as people think it is just to, you know, plug one in and get it connected. It can be spotty at times. It does limit our students' ability to be involved in video conversations, you know. So we need a different solution. And so, you know, one of our needs that, you know, we'd love just to keep you in the conversation is really just think about how the city of Bellevue can partner with us and partner with other agencies, and especially some of our technology companies, to think about how we can provide greater Wi-Fi access to our students so that we don't have any of our families or students in our community without that. Because I believe that access to the internet, access to Wi-Fi is really a basic right that we should have for all of our students and families. Next slide. This is just adding on a little bit with transportation. You know, we have 26 drivers attendants who are delivering meals to 36 different locations. And then we have some bus drivers that are delivering. We had childcare at Lake Hills, but we closed it down. But we do have some students that, that we are providing transportation. And then we have a couple of drivers that are supporting the IT. When our drivers are not out delivering pieces, there's a picture of them because they are doing deep cleaning of our buses and other areas. And so they put on all the necessary equipment to make sure that they're keeping themselves safe. But we're doing everything we can to ensure that it's an all-hands approach to ensure that our students have what they need. Next slide. Another one of our areas has been supporting our seniors. And so I have really been impressed by the work that our academic team and operations team has done in this area. I'm not going to go through all these, but you can see that we have worked very quickly in a short amount of time to really make some significant changes for our students. And this is actually old data. These numbers are, have changed on a daily basis. But one of the unique things that we've done to support our seniors is that we basically have really strong organization around this. We can pretty much tell you nearly where every student is and what they're, where they are in terms of being able to graduate. And so this is an area where we have really brought our classified staff in, some of our hourly staff to support. They are assigned certain students that need additional supports. And we have heard from quite a few members of our staff that have said that this has really given them a strong sense of purpose, knowing that we are really doing everything we can to keep people whole. But after a while, you can only do so much professional development online, and people want to do something. And so we have found a way to give some purpose to some of our staff that we are still, you know, paying, you know, to be able to keep them whole in the work that we're trying to accomplish. Next slide. We have also really been working to ensure that we are supporting our seniors in the best way possible. We did a town hall for all of our seniors a couple of weeks ago, and then that was followed up by the town hall that was led by school senior leadership and the school leadership. And so we are basically empowering our schools to really think about what is it that they want their graduation ceremony to look like. You know, we still don't know what the governor is going to do in terms of easing up on some of the stay-in-place order, but we don't anticipate large gatherings anytime soon. And so we're trying to do the best job to support our students and think about how we can plan this for them in the best way possible, whether it's graduation, whether it's proms, Spirit Week, other types of things. So there's some really unique things that are happening, but we know that for our seniors that this just has to be, you know, devastating. I can't even imagine what that would feel like. And so we really want to do everything we can to support them during this time. It's a challenge for all of our students in any of the transitional times. Can you think about kids from eighth grade going to ninth grade, fifth grade to sixth grade, new families coming in as kindergarten, you know, families and students. And so we have some plans in place to ensure that we have some key work going on to support our students in the transition. But our seniors are definitely top of mind, and we're working closely with them just to make sure that they are leading in this conversation and leading what would make the best sense for them. Very recently, we are, we just added a piece just to honor our seniors. We are distributing senior signs. At East High School, we'll be delivering those out to families and students. And they're basically honored. There's just an example of their one from Smamish, where it's just, you know, honor recognizing our seniors so they can place them in their yards or windows, you know, whatever works best for the family. But, you know, we're doing our best to honor, support them, but know that this is really difficult, challenging time, and we want to try to honor them as best as possible. Next slide. Next slide. It'll click again. Thank you very much. So we are, spend a lot of time now on our remote learning plan, thinking about there's no way that we can replicate what we do on the day-to-day basis in the brick-and-mortar environment. And so we have put together a really robust plan, a thing about what are some of the essential learning goals that we want to accomplish for each grade level and, and key content areas. And then at the secondary for courses, we can't cover all the standards, but we know that there are some key standards that are important for kids to be prepared for the next level. So we have done that elementary level. You can just see here just an example of some of the pieces that are in place around some learning that will be taking place. Our teachers and our educators and staff members have been incredibly innovative in this space, coming up with different ideas for kids to do check-in, virtual lunches. There's been some Friday fun clubs in multiple ways that our educators have really tried to reach our students. We were very fortunate here in Bellevue because we had been planning to close regardless of what the state was going to do. And so we were able to provide some training to our educators and staff members on Microsoft Teams. That is our primary platform that we are using. We are already pretty strong users of Microsoft, OneNote and Outlook, but adding Teams is something that we were all just starting to get introduced. And it's really been amazing over the last few weeks how strong we've all become using this tool. And it's true for educators that it may have been new when we closed, but over time, we've just seen more innovation, more creativity, and more design opportunities for them to come up with different ways to reach our students. And just seeing some really impressive work going on in that area. Next slide. This is another one, just as secondary, where we did a safe taking courses and really thinking about some of the key standards. I'm not going to go into details on here, but again, you can just see that we have lessons outlined. There's videos that we're embedding in some of the lessons so that, you know, if a student doesn't get it in the time they're with their educator at the time, they can go and watch a video. We're bringing some different resources in from external supports also. Next slide. And then I just want to spend a little bit of time talking about well-being and mental health and social, emotional support because that has been top of mind for all of us. I continually remind people that, you know, we're not at home doing remote learning, you know, we're not at home working, you know, we're in the middle of the health crisis trying to work. We're in the middle of the health, of a health crisis trying to provide remote learning experiences to our students. And so we have continually been leading with the words of compassion and kindness and grace. And we are really doing our best to make sure that that's being extended to our students and our families and our educators because everybody is just trying to figure this out. And although it's getting better and it's easier, in the beginning, this was really rough. And there's a lot of been, that has been discussed and has been shared about the grieving process that people are going through, and people are still going through that now, just this whole loss run our seniors are experiencing right now, loss around just the social connection on a day-to-day basis. I think we have taken for granted for a long time how powerful of an institution education is. And so it really is becoming more apparent during this time. So we have been surveying our students and our families and our educators. We're doing that every three weeks. And part of our survey is not so much asking about the academics piece, although we do talk about that. But really, we just want to like, just, how are you doing? You know, what's working? How are you feeling? And so this is just kind of giving you a little insight into some of that. And I'm going to share with you some of the results that we're getting. Just quick highlights on this space. You will see that, you know, quite a few number of our students are expressing feelings of sadness and loneliness and overwhelmed and frustrated, and just kind of not knowing what to do. And we need to do some more work in this area. But hearing how our students and our educators and families are feeling about this has been really beneficial for us to then come from a place of empathy to think about what we can do differently. Next slide. This just give you just a quick highlight on our, this was our second survey that we were able to refine. We have another one coming out on May 11, but you can see that it does change a little bit depending on our grade levels. But overall, on a scale from, you know, zero to five, you know, we're basically in the threes right now around just how learning, you know, went in that week. And so we'll continue to gather this information. We hope that this improves. Next slide. And then this was some of the, from just some of the comments that came out from our students, and they're highlighted to really just emphasize the key patterns. But you can see that for our, even our youngest students didn't feel like learning from home. So kind of this, I wouldn't necessarily call it apathy, but I just think it's such a new environment for our kids to be in that they don't, not sure exactly what learning looks like. You can see that if you go, as we go into our secondary, it changes a little bit, but a lot of it's coming down to just understanding what teachers want them to do. And then, you know, quite honestly, you know, there's some of our kids that don't like learning at home. They're so used to the social construct that education provides and that school provides that it's really been a struggle for them. And then with some of our older students are just busy doing other things, you know. And so, you know, we're using this information because it's really helping us ensure that we're planning more effectively moving forward. Next slide. This just shows around how students were feeling about learning at home. And again, what we're seeing is that, you know, more positive at the elementary level, not as positive, especially when we get to our seniors. And again, I think part of this is because the experience, especially during this first part, was really challenging. But now you see some students feeling happy and fine, but we're really just tracking that piece around kids feeling sad, lonely, overwhelmed. And then I'll start a little bit around some of the other writings. Next slide. How connected they feel to our teachers. And so this was a positive in some cases because I do think that overall, our students are feeling connected. I'll share with you a little bit more around how we're learning about how connected our students are. We're using some of the analytics that are provided in the background with the Microsoft tools. We can find out how much students are connected to Teams, how much they're connecting via email. But you can see that our students are feeling that they're pretty connected at this, at that time that we did this survey. Next slide. This is a one where we really feel like we need to do some work in this area around how we can do a better job of supporting students being connected to each other. Students now have the ability on Teams to go and do chats and video functions. We're actually going to be allowing them to actually create some of their own team sessions. We had to add a filter in that process that we can keep track of, you know, just the comments and words and things that are, that are said in there just for safety pieces. But you can see that, you know, especially for our seniors who are not feeling as connected to their classmates. And like I said, And like I said, you know, we are really just learning a lot around how important, you know, schooling is for our kids. And so we have shared all this information with our educators, with our principals. And I know since the time that we've done this survey, there's been a lot of effort to really try to change this outcome. So hopefully we will see some switches the next time we survey on March 11th. Next slide. And this is just some preliminary findings. And I'm not going to read all these through, but you can kind of take a look at it that, you know, half students feel positive, you know, but again, just reiterating that this feeling of sadness and loneliness and overwhelmed and frustrated is something that we really want to make sure that we are doing something about. Next slide. And then just as we reflect on some of this data, you know, we know that how powerful an educator can be in the lives of our students. I mean, I think we all can probably attest that, you know, there's one educator who made a difference in our own lives. And so we know educators make a difference for our students. We know our staff members make a difference for our students. And not being able to have that now has definitely been impactful. So we're mindful of that in, again, doing a number of things to try to make changes in that area so that we can change this, this situation and scenario that our students are feeling. Next slide. These are just some adjustments that we're doing. We're have some district wise strategies that we put in place. We reemphasize some of our social emotional learning work that we were doing. We had a meeting last week with our principals and had them share some wonderful things that they're doing. And so we are seeing some shifts already from this first survey that we did. And so we really just want to make sure that we change this. One of the mistakes that we made during the survey is that we didn't use the right survey tool. And so this next survey tool, will we be able to disaggregate the data a little bit more so we can see even by subgroups what's happening, but we really are all hands on deck to make sure that we are just really building on the strengths and connections with our educators and teachers to make sure that they are feeling connected to each other. We want our students to have that connection. We want our educators to have that connection. So it's a lot of work going on in that space. Next slide. Yeah. And so just some, some final thoughts. We are right now in the process of forming some teams to really put out some, we have some guiding principles that we're providing to some of our staff members. And we're really approaching this in a collaborative manner in that we have to really be thinking about what is, what's, what's it going to look like in the fall if the river is a fall? And so we have four groups that are coming together. We're including our educators, school leaders, central office leaders. And we're basically thinking about what is it going to look like? We have to come back with some social distance guidelines in place. We may have staggered schedules. We may have different students coming in at different times. And so we're going to start planning and thinking about that all centered around, you know, our strategic plan work, our focus on equity and really thinking about our families and students who are getting on the margins the most. We also are going to be thinking about, you know, what if we have to continue what we're doing right now, you know, what is that going to look like? What would remote learning look like? We have to continue this work. And then we have a group that's also going to be thinking about if we come back. I anticipate that this is going to happen to us again next year. We will have to close again. Just based on, you know, potential outbreaks until we have a vaccine. And if that's the case, I want to be better prepared and ready to basically start the next day whenever we have to make a decision to close. And then finally, we have a group that's looking, thinking about over the last several weeks, we've been able to really shift like how we utilize our staff and resources in some really fast ways that have allowed us to be really focused, like supporting our, our seniors, supporting our special education students, supporting our multi language learners. And so how can we take those kinds of practices and utilize them so that we're better at the work that we're doing? So those are all things that we're going to be doing over the next couple of weeks. We're going through a design process. It'll be rapid design. So we can just get some initial thinking and then we'll be building that out. But in the end, I've really encouraged you to take a look at this opinion piece that came out in the New York Times. It really just struck me because this, this quote, you know, that it's kind of what kind of, what do we need from leaders right now? What do we need from, you know, our mayor? What do we need from city manager? What do we need from council members? What do we need from board members? What do we need from central office, district leaders, community leaders, you know? And this is kind of talks a bit about that, but ultimately, you know, we have to always be thinking about those who are most vulnerable, those who are on the margin and really be thinking about all the people that are, you know, on the front lines, you know, risking their lives so that, you know, we can get back to whatever normal is going to look like. So I'm really grateful for the partnership and work that we have with the city of Bellevue. Feel like I can constantly call any of you at any time for support and guidance. And just know that we are here to serve, you know, our community. We're here to serve our students. And I think we've done a, you know, really great job up to this point. It hasn't been perfect, but we haven't let perfect get in the way of, of good. So using a little bit of old terror, you know, as our guiding principle on this work. So that's what I had to give you an update. Open any questions, comments, wonderings you may have. But again, just thank you for even allowing me to have this space to share with you what we've done over the last several weeks.
Wow, Dr. Duran, that was just a great presentation, really, very informative. Um, I'm going to, I know we have lots of questions and comments, so I'm going to call on people in this order. Councilmember Stokes, Robertson, Barksdale, Deputy Mayor Noonhouse, Councilmember Zahn, Lee, and then me. So starting with Councilmember Stokes.
Okay, thank you. I echo your comments. This was really fascinating and particularly being involved in education for so long, I really, you know, I connect with this and it's fascinating. I think one of the things that I'm concerned about is, is the homeless students and, you know, how it's affected staff and families directly. We don't have to get into that, but I know that that's, that's a big concern you're dealing with. And anything we can do to help in those areas, I'm sure we will, we'll find ways to do that. I think it was really fascinating doing the student activity and the whole discussion of our, our surveys and how the students feel and all. And I was thinking as I went along is how different is this from the prior years? I mean, how do we, you know, it'd be fascinating to see that. And I hope that, I think it's a great way to, to approach students and families and, and really particularly in the social emotional areas, and that also affects their learning quite a bit. How do we maybe use these, these tools or this understanding to move forward after this and then see what the differences are? Because a lot of those things that you highlighted, I know just from my experience in this, that those are things that are there anyhow. But I, I'm sure this has been really exacerbated. So it'll be fascinating to see kind of, and I think it's great to do that, continuing along to kind of keep up with this, because I think you've hit on a really good way to get, you know, better feeling. It's just like we do with our surveys of the public and businesses and communities. But how are we doing? And I think, and what's, what's bothering? And those are really, really important. It's very impressive the way you've done that. The other thing I wanted to just mention is, and ask, and you, we're, we're doing this, but how can the city help? How can we do more? Working on the wifi access, I'm sure we're all excited about doing that. I think we can help a lot on that. Working with the homeless students, working with, helping in terms of the, you know, the sir, giving services or getting kids in, you know, connected and with the families, anything that we can, you think we can help, we'll be glad to do. But I really applaud the work that's being done. And I think one of the things about it is that you're going to come out of this and probably knowing more about how to, it's going to improve education in a sense. I think that's, you probably didn't take that as, as one of the things you were thinking about doing. You wanted to actually continue it, but I, I, I hope that from this experience, something very positive can come out of it in terms of how you approach things, how you look at things, how you what you weigh more important and how you connect people. And do end up having some, something positive come out that we learn out of this and moving forward. So fantastic. I really appreciate it and appreciate your leadership. And we've had a long relationship with the school, the schools, and we can increase on that. So thank you very much.
Thank you. And I'll just quickly say that I do think that, I definitely think we're going to learn a lot. And that's, that's why we're having a work group that's going to come together, thinking about what are things that we learned during this process that we wanted to, to utilize, you know? Even just the use of some of these virtual meeting spaces. I mean, I think there's an opportunity to be able to use that moving forward. And actually we can able to allow students to have those connections. But we definitely will be thinking about how we can continue some of this survey work, because it's been, yeah, it's always been there, but I think it just becomes exasperated during these times. And so it's very important. And then I do think that we are definitely learning a lot. I think it's going to lead us into some great conversations around competency based education and, you know, mastery education. And even thinking about grading in a different way. So really looking forward to seeing, you know, those conversations and what comes out from our collaborative work from our educators and leaders coming together to think about this.
Councilmember Robertson.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you Superintendent Duran for coming on tonight. I'm the only council member who actually has, currently has kids in the public schools. Council, Deputy Mayor Noonhouse will in the fall as he has a kindergartner. But although many of us have had kids at Bellevue schools, but I'm the only one going through this. So I'm going to channel a little bit of my parent hat, because during the town halls that we've had where parents have dialed in, which I have, there's been no Q and A. So first of all, I do have a high school senior and the senior high school class of 2020, my goodness, they have taken senior skip day to a whole new level. So, um, anyway, so, um, the, uh, yes, thank you. That was supposed to be a joke. So there's a couple of questions I have. One, and, and some comments that I'll just give you as feedback, because I know you're not meeting with people. There's social distancing and, and whatnot. The, I think that it's been going pretty well with the online learning. I have two high school students, a freshman and a senior. And they've been logging in and doing all their work and working hard and it's their, it's been ramped up. The level of work has really increased over time, and I think that's really good. The, one of the challenges, I think, is that there's inconsistency between classes based on the teacher's level of technological aptitude, if you will. So to the extent that you guys can internally help the teachers who may not have as much aptitude, get their things online, make sure that they can, for example, they've had tests that they were taking that crashed multiple times and had to reload and, and it was just the platform issue. So to the extent that you can make that streamline, I think that will help all students. The, I, I, like I said, I've also logged into the senior district wide town hall. I've logged into our, at Newport High School Town Hall, and I've logged into any of the other town halls that you've done for, for parents and students. And I, I really appreciate the fact that you guys have been being thoughtful and reaching out to people. And I, I also can understand that there's a lot of unknown right now. So for example, on graduation, there's, there's, it's unknown when and what kind of graduation they'll be, when and what those be, if, or if they'll be prom or senior grad night or recognition ceremonies. And most importantly, from my perspective, a goodbye, because these kids have been in school together with each other and with their students for 13 years or with their teachers and they really, and the teachers need to say goodbye and the kids need to say goodbye. So I'm not asking you to tell me the plan right now, because you may not have it. But do you have a timeline on when you might have decisions made on those that you'll be able to share out with families?
Yeah, actually, I actually will have an update on this tomorrow. So I can, I'll follow up with you on a response for that. Because, you know, we've been working with every individual school, because we, we made a collective decision that we didn't want to be the district coming up with the decision, you know, telling high school seniors, this is what it's going to look like. And so we have really been empowering our individual schools and, and seniors to be thinking about that. So I'll be getting some update on that tomorrow. You know, we're, we're really in a, yeah, we're in that place of unknown, because we don't know exactly what the governor will do in terms of easing up. You know, in one of the previous press conferences, he spoke about, you know, large gatherings being one of the last things that is going to come out. So we, we've been hearing that we may have that guidance information by May 15th. I'm going to call tomorrow with the state, so I'll have a little bit more insight into that. But I'll be, I'll be able to follow up with this, with you on this later on this week.
Great. Yeah. I mean, I know, I just wanted to know what, it's all about managing expectations, right? We know that there's a lot of unknown. When do we think we'll have an idea of when it'll be known? And then I just, from a personal plea, would love to see a graduation ceremony of some sort, even if it's on the school fields where people are six feet apart. I think that that's a really important marker. And I would encourage that to happen before the end of July, because early August, a lot of kids go off to college. If they're on the semester system. So yeah, I, I look forward to hearing more about that. The, as well as, do you know when you're going to have information available on when kids can turn in there? For example, in my high school senior, she needs to turn in her computer. And then there's kids that have stuff still at school that needs to be picked up. I know that that's being worked on. Do you know when you will have that information?
Yeah, that should be coming out actually this week. We had some people give us some feedback on that last week. There was some conversation today in our executive team about that. Again, one of our challenges is, we won't be able to do anything until June, because it's just the way the order is right now. And so we're going to have a process in place for all that to happen. So we'll be communicating that.
Yeah, I'm not bugging you about what it's going to be, but I just, you know.
Yeah, absolutely.
Do we know when it's going to be? And then just a comment on the new grading system. I don't know if you covered that in your, I didn't. In your comments where the kids are either going to get an incomplete if they have below a 70% or they're going to get an A. And as someone who's, you know, kids are working really hard. And my youngest, for example, had straight A's before you changed the grading system. And she, and it's hard. It's hard. She works hard. That's not an every semester kind of thing. It's really, it can affect the kid's motivation if all of their As are going to have an asterisk with them. And so that's just more of a comment. I don't know if, if the kids actually earn above a 90%, whether the asterisks could say they actually earned it or not. But it, if I saw on the surveys that some of the kids are feeling like they don't really want to work that hard in school. And it's, it's hard for the kids that are willing to work hard, to want to work hard if there's no payoff. So that's just more of a comment on the motivation. It's, it makes that A less meaningful if it's, if, and whether they earned it or not, if everyone, I mean, you know, anyway, that's, that's just a comment. You might think about how that might affect the motivation of some of the kids who are willing to work hard. So.
That'd be actually really interesting, because we'll be surveying on May 11th. And the survey results I shared with you was prior to we made our grading decision. So it'll be interesting to see what our students say about that. I will definitely say that, you know, we were originally leaning towards a pass fail kind of possibility. But then the state came down with, normally it's guidance. This time it came out as a rule that we had to issue grades. And so we really struggled with that, because we want to do pass fail and then have families and students have options to get the grades, you know? So we kind of thought about it, that the A and I was very similar, almost like a pass fail, you know? And then, you know, as we thought about it from a place of equity and about, you know, we, we know there's some kids that, you know, because of either technology or other situations that, you know, we have kids that are watching younger siblings during this time, that students are in such different places. But our really big goal is to ensure that, you know, we have as few as incompletes as possible. So we have some processes and some really clear guidelines that we give into our educators. I'm not sure if we can do an asterisk or anything like that, but you know, I think that everybody across the state is going to have, you know, something that indicates that, you know, this, this time period and what that meant. But thank you.
Yeah, I think it's, I think it's definitely going to be something that the colleges are looking at for the kids who are freshmen, sophomore and juniors this year. It, that, you know, as far as the waiting goes. But anyway, I'll take off my parent hat. Thank you for letting me do that. And then just tell you, yeah, tell you, we really, I really appreciate the partnership between the district and the city. And I know that the city's been putting more wifi hotspot spots out there. Or I don't know if you call them hotspots, but we have more zones in the area with wifi. So as we're becoming a smart city, so it would be good as, as we're through weathering this storm, when we start revisiting the smart city, if we could work together on that issue, because it's good for the city, but it's good for the, it's also very good for the district. It's good for our students. It's good for our businesses. And having some, some dovetailing with our smart city initiative for both the school district and the city, I think would be a really beneficial partnership. So, yeah, it'd be good to work together and hopefully the city manager's office will loop in with, when we all come up for air after COVID, this COVID emergency is over, work together on that as we implement our smart city plan. So. Yeah, thank you very much. And thank you, Mayor, for letting me take a little bit more time as the one parent rep on the, on the council. Thank you.
Councilmember Barksdale.
Thank you, Mayor. And thank you Superintendent Duran for your leadership and also to your staff for adapting during these uncertain times and ensuring access for all students as part of that. I do want to commend you all for providing services and continually engaging parents, students and educators to assess the ongoing needs and using those findings to refine the services that you all provide. As you all probably know, I'm a big data person, and I think this is a really good example of, you know, reaching out to the people who are impacted that are part of the school district and bringing that, those insights back on a regular basis. It's really good, great to see that. So absolutely. So I did have a couple, a few questions, some for staff and then one for you Superintendent Duran, for you. Uh, so I did have a couple, a few questions, some for staff and then one for you Superintendent Duran, for you. Um, have there been any sort of follow-up interviews, you know, um, relative to the, the survey feedback around, you know, the sadness and loneliness and not feeling connected? Um, in addition to the survey feedback, that's for you. And then for staff, um, uh, city staff, I, is there a way that we can partner in collecting data? I've brought up in the past, you know, reaching out to the community act like actively reaching out and collecting data similar to this, actually. Um, so I just wonder if there's a way to partner on that and or partner on, you know, the, the um, on the findings, sharing the findings and so forth, so that we can incorporate city services and support as well.
So I'll um, I'll introduce just from first from the district standpoint. So yeah, we followed up, um, like I said, we're gonna do another survey on May 11th, but with the results that would I share with you, we followed up with um, all of our educators. We gave the feedback to our school leaders, um, sent the information out. And so they immediately, you know, took that information and really came up with quite a few strategies. And I was in a meeting last week where they just um, already had set up a number of things from, you know, some of the you know, lunch, virtual lunches and there's um, you know, trying to include some more fun stuffs and just act tight like more of the social emotional learning lessons we provided. So we have already revamped in some of those areas right away to make sure that that is, you know, front and center for um, educators and school leaders.
Thank you.
So councilmember Barksdale, um, your question about um, obtaining data from the community, you know, we know that's been a longstanding interest of yours. Um, and it's something that we continue to work on and take a look at. Uh, hopefully we'll have something to report out on uh, with respect to your uh, interest in that area soon.
And any, is there any opportunity to collaborate? And I know there's probably some privacy concerns, but maybe at an aggregate level or something? Given that they're already sort of doing that.
You know, I, I can't, I can't really answer that question. I'd probably have to get some other folks that have been more involved in this as well as our legal staff.
Okay, thank you.
Uh, Deputy Mayor Noonhouse.
Thank you, Mayor. And uh, Dr. Rann, again, I'll echo my colleagues here and thank you for your leadership with the Bellevue School District and the and the great presentation, especially, you know, during a very extremely challenging times for you and your staff and, and your students. And um, what I'm most impressed by your presentation is it seems like you are uh, asking the right questions and certainly preparing for a uncertain future. Um, so that's uh, really good to see and really good to hear. Um, and really just really glad to see that focus on the uh, on the students uh, 360 wellbeing and social, emotional, mental health. Um, you know, I can only imagine uh, the, the difficulty that some students may have learning from home when uh, you know, they may have parents that are worried about uh, their job or their financial outlook or God forbid, um, it's a, it's a domestic violence situation which would uh, make it extremely challenging to concentrate on, 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 on schoolwork. As you probably know, uh, domestic violence is up uh, in double digits uh, in, in Bellevue and, and elsewhere. So um, you know, my heart is going to those students uh, in a very challenging time. Um, couple of quick questions for you. Um, what percentage of the students uh, do you believe were ready uh, to go uh, the online learning path? Um, from, from, from day one when you had to uh, when you had to shift? And uh, what do you hope that percentage might look like if uh, if uh, there is a second wave and we have to shift again to an online learning environment?
Wow, that's a, that's a tough question there. It's a great question. So yeah, you know, I would say that, I don't know if I give you a percent, but I would say that at our, at the secondary level, our students were, were better prepared for that because we, you know, have had the one-to-one laptop program and then we do um, you know, we use online or I'm sorry, um, Microsoft OneNote is where all of our curriculum and courses are housed. And so students are very much used to that environment. They're used to going into this online space to gather their information. So I think we were better prepared at the secondary level for that. And I think our students were, were, were more adept at that. What we weren't anticipating was the large number in need for the wifi access, you know, so that's definitely where I think that um, we um, we, we, you know, we were, we, we anticipated it. We had them on hand. We were ready to go, but we didn't expect it to be the way it was. So I can't really give you a percent, but I would say we were better prepared at the secondary level. I would say we were not as prepared at the elementary level, you know, and it is really ironic during this time because, you know, even in this last year, we had, you know, I'm gonna say we had some members of our community and our families expressing the concern around screen time and how much time they're online and, you know, and, you know, and our, our belief has been that, you know, you have to strike that balance because there's the use of technology for instructional, you know, educational purposes. And then there's the use of cell phones for other purposes, you know, and you can't blur those lines all the time. And so you know, we really just trying to advocate and to help people understand how we utilize them. And we had just started leaning into this conversation around what should technology look like at the elementary level. We had started some pilots of some laptop carts at fifth grade. And we didn't necessarily want to go to a one-to-one, but we want to definitely have that. So we were not as prepared at the elementary level. And then I think the, the further you go down, it's become very challenging, you know, one of our board members has a kindergarten student and it's been challenging to work from home full-time job, have, you know, four kids at home and then trying to support the youngest learner. And, you know, it is just, you know, you can't just get a younger student online to do it, but it's making us now think about the use of like tablets and having preloaded content on there. So um, I think is what um, councilmember Stokes said, we're gonna be smarter about what education can look like in the future and we'll be better prepared in the, in the future. So some good learning to that.
Absolutely. Um, ironically though, it, it appears though, um, based on the survey results that your younger students had uh, perhaps an easier time with the transition than your older students did. Um, by and large, based on your uh, survey results here, um, it seems like they're, they feel a little bit more connected to their classmates and their T-shirt and their teachers um, and, and their feelings toward uh, online learning all appear to be more positive than uh, the, the older students. Any, any thoughts on that or insights?
Absolutely. Well, I think one of the big differences is just at the elementary level, you know, um, they have usually tend to have, you know, one homeroom teacher and then they have, you know, their you know, specialized courses, you know, so they're used to connecting with the one teacher. And so um, it's very different at secondary levels, you know, students obviously have seen multiple students. And I think what we were seeing in the beginning was just some confusion around, you know, who do I get? What do I send? Where's it coming from with this? I, we heard from um, you know, many, many of our secondary parents, were they about like seven different emails from seven different teachers, you know, and so there was some confusion. And at the elementary level, we also um, had more material in terms of um, printed that we were able to get out, you know, quicker and sooner. Um, so I do think that kind of ties into it, but I think the nature of elementary, you know, just having one teacher um, makes it a little bit easier where they literally could have a connection with their teacher every day versus on the secondary level. We were trying to build a course that um, really was being our building, a course schedule that was being mindful of our educators' experience and what they were trying to accomplish on their own personally and professionally and ensure that our kids are getting the right um, level of support.
Got it. Thanks for the answer.
Yeah.
Yeah. Well, um, as, as been previously stated, I mean, our, our partnership uh, with the school just is an important one, I think, to, to all of us on the council. So um, I look forward to uh, further updates. And I think um, this, the wifi, um, getting that for uh, every student in the city is an important one as we towards, uh, we already are considered a smart city, but uh, the, the more we can help facilitate that, uh, the, the better off we are. Uh, not just for businesses and residents, but those important students. Uh, it's, it's, it's all one big ecosystem and they all work together. We all need wifi. It is that right that we need to uh, that we need to have uh, in the city of Bellevue. So thanks again for your presentation. Appreciate it.
Awesome. Yeah, thank you.
Councilmembers on.
Yes, uh, thank you, Dr. Uh, Duran. I agree with the comments made already. And I especially appreciate your comment about the fact that all the, the kids are all in different places. And I would say that those kids are in families that are living in Bellevue and that they, depending on where they are from any number of things, whether there is food insecurity or um homelessness, uh, multi-language learners, um, special education. I mean, those are all challenges we had before COVID came. And I think that with COVID, it's even exacerbated the needs and the gaps in our community. So I really appreciate all the hard work the district's been doing around all of these pieces. Um, I know that there's been a lot of work around the food insecurity partnerships with the city of Bellevue as well as many other um, agencies in our community. And I also, I really appreciate the fact that we're collecting data to look at understanding, you know, what is um, how many kids are getting some of the meals for breakfast and lunch? And really identifying where those gaps are so that we can figure out how to reach those harder to reach families where they may not be able to pick up food during the the times where the food is available, let's grab and go. And so it sounds like there's work in partnership with the city and others to um, address those needs. So I appreciate that. Um, and the comment about the citywide wifi, I also appreciate that you highlighted that as a need. And I would strongly recommend that we accelerate our smart city initiative related to wifi. Because as Dr. Duran, you've mentioned, I think there are many that believe there will be a second wave and that even after we reopen, there may be another closure that's needed. So the more we can do to be ready for that from the standpoint of wifi as a smart city, that'll be really important as well. And then um, I, I am curious about, you talked about the seniors and some of the work in those core classes to um, help those seniors along the way. Do you have a sense about how many seniors are at risk of not graduating at this point?
Yeah, so I would say that's not very high at all. I don't have a, a number um, specifically because um, I actually think we're gonna probably have our highest graduation rate this year, which I think really speaks to just this focused effort of supporting our students during this time. Um, you know, we do have some students that we already know whether they're um, language learner or other needs where they go beyond the four years. And so we anticipate that. But um, but don't have a specific number, but we are really working to ensure that, you know, our, our goal in this area, we actually revamped all of our goals for the fourth quarter to be aligned with all this effort. But our goal in this area is um, you know, as close to a hundred percent as possible, you know, with exclusion of the kids that have the, the longer plans in place. So we are really working to do everything we can to ensure that every student graduates this year. Um, and so this all hands approach is really, really important. And it's, it's been incredibly impressive to see um, the work that our team has done in a short amount of time to keep track of our students and support them with this area.
Yeah, that's great. And then you're.
I quickly just saying on the nutrition, you know, the nutrition one has been really interesting for us too, because we're really looking at this closely because we have about 3,500 of our students, you know, qualified for uh, free reduced lunch um, and breakfast. But on a given day average, I think our average even before closure was probably about 1,100 a day. So even with that number, not every student, you know, takes advantage of it, you know? And so our team had already been doing a lot of work to, like, we had set up like vending machines where kids can go and you know, they don't necessarily have to go to the cafeteria to get food. So we've been really innovative in terms of coming up with different ideas. And so even during um, non-closure time, we don't necessarily serve all of our students, but we have been working very closely, you know, with the city and all the um, family community specialists to reach out to families. We've done, we've actually did a robocall across the district, which is, you know, not common for us to use, you know, than for, you know, more emergency kind of things. But we decided that we're gonna send one out because we also wanted the families to know that if your circumstances change and you need support, you know, we're here for you. We've got food for you. And so we have a number of uh, people that are just reaching out and trying to, you know, reach families from text messaging, ensuring language isn't a barrier. You know, we have heard of some fear from some of our families, especially our families that are um, not documented around showing up at the same place every day. Um, and so, you know, that is definitely a concern. That is very valid. Um, so we are working to support them. We have, you know, some of our staff that's delivering food to families. And then we have a number of uh, community partners that are doing grocery, you know, buying and delivering for families. So it's a really um, broad approach that we have to ensure that that need is being met. And I will just say that um, I also anticipate that that is not gonna go away um, anytime soon. I think once the orders are lifted and some of our families are able to get back to work, you know, first priority is gonna be, you know, paying their rent um, and probably paying the bills that they've accumulated during this time. You can't even imagine what kind of credit has been racked up during this time, you know? And so I know that, and circumstances are definitely gonna change for families. So it's gonna be ongoing.
Yeah, so I really appreciate it. And, and then I think the proactive of looking at the social, emotional and wellbeing of our students, because I think that from a mental health standpoint, this, this uh, COVID is gonna be very challenging for all of us, not just us adults, but you know, the kids as well. And uh, I know you talked about it a little bit, but I am also concerned about the teachers that are really, and you alluded to this, they're doing dual, dual duty of some of the teachers actually having children at home themselves and then trying to actually be a good teacher when there's, their kids may be um, at home and also needing their time. So I think as we move forward, just making sure that our, our teachers' needs are also being met will be very important.
Agreed. That has been, yeah, I would agree. That's something that has been top of mind for us from the very beginning. And then, you know, I know I've heard from a number of our educators, you know, in that situation, I heard, you know, one just example where someone shared, you know, three kids at home and, you know, trying to teach and wife's teacher also, and just the struggle that they were having. And so uh, we have been working very closely with our teacher association to really have these conversations. And you know, I think it's been reflective in terms of our remote learning plan that's came out and even our grading approach, because again, this idea that we could just turnkey, the brick and mortar environment that we're used to is just not, not reality. So thank you for your comments there. And it has definitely been something that has been um, support for us. We, we have um, our human resources team has just done amazing work to try to, you know, recognize people, support people. Um, we have people that are calling, trying to stay connected, you know, because there's also the reality around number of um, people are experiencing this time um, alone, you know, and so we're trying to provide, you know, supports and resources to help them. But, you know, supporting our educators during this time has been something that definitely been, it's been on my mind, been on our team's mind, and we've been doing our best to support them. And again, I think that's gonna be ongoing as we do this work is, this isn't just, if there's, there was one, not a playbook for this whole, what we've been through. And it wasn't like to flip the switch near in this um, online learning environment. We've been very cautious to use that term online learning because I think it connotates something different. We continually emphasize remote learning. Thank you for your.
Yeah, absolutely. Okay, thank you, councilmembers on. Um, councilmember Lee.
Thank you, uh, Mayor. Uh, thank you, Dr. Duran. Uh, I really appreciate uh, what you've been doing for the Bellevue School District. As you know, in education, the school is the number one for the city. Uh, Bellevue is Bellevue, attracts a lot of people to come here. It's a great city because of the emphasis on education. And we have one of the greatest school, uh, school district in the country. That's amazing. So I'm really glad that, you know, it's continuing to be so. And especially what you've done. As you probably know, yeah, I don't have any kids in the school now, you know, I mean, I'm too old, but I do have grandkids that's in the high school. And they unfortunately are in Seattle School District. So anyway, but also, you know, I have many high school students that, you know, are working with me. And so I have a definite interest for the reason I just mentioned, education is the most important thing for uh, preparing people, uh, you know, to lead the world in the future. And the world changes all the time. So education has to change. So what you are addressing really, as councilmembers on just mentioned, are the things that you have always been doing. You have since you came here three years ago, you know, I think you've been really working hard uh, on those fronts. And uh, so on the, you know, the COVID-19 basically has amplified and the magnitude and needs for these changes. So uh, so I'm gonna just talk about briefly what you have done and I'm number one, impressed what you've done. And two, maybe want to learn a few things, uh, maybe exchange some uh, you know, ideas. Uh, one is, uh, you know, we talk about the practical consideration for college success. You know, that's important. That's why you're doing everything you can to prepare the seniors, the grading system, the grades and all that stuff. It's important. But as we would know, you know, that's a one aspect of it. Social conditions change. We're talking about our equity. We're talking about leadership and we're talking about the things that you have done that's impressed me in your presentation is the survey to talk about mental health, wellbeing, uh, social, emotional health. These are very important because that's what makes the students, the. Because that's what makes the students, the future citizens of the world that have to lead our country, lead our community. And I think, you know, the changes are going to be whatever they may, and we don't know what they are, right? It's the future. But you have to have a people that's prepared to do so. And that's the element that, you know, I think you you've been very conscientious working on how to prepare the people, the young people. And you and, you know, Jen mentioned Jen's also, teachers are important. Because they are the one that's teaching. It's the whole system. And that has to basically address the mental health, the social, the emotional, you know, preparing young people. So I really think that the questions you ask, and it's not surprising, you know, because I've been working with lots of young people for a number of years, that they have a feel, a disconnect. They're not feeling connected. Because they are now spending a lot more time in academic competition competitiveness. And they are not doing the social connection, learning how to work as a team. You know, as, especially, you know, when you're preparing college, you want to get an A. You know, you want to get better than the next person so that you got chosen to whatever, you know, school or profession you want to get into. So it's a very competitive world. So I think we need to emphasize that. That kind of bring up, you know, what survey says, you know, it's kind of, we have suspected that's the case. So I think it's important to know that. And I really hope that, you know, you're on the right track to do more understanding of what the students really feel about, what do they need, how to become great, great people, great citizens. You know, becoming, well, and working with the teachers. And the second point is, you know, when the technology is changing, this online teaching, you mentioned Tom Freeman. He's the guy that wrote the book, The World is Flat, you know, and he talked about online learning. Because we have the best educators in the world. And we need to share the best educator for every student. So online is the way to go. Instead of teaching to a class of forty, you know, with different teachers, with different levels, like Councilmember Robinson was saying, this different aptitudes. You have, you can have the best teacher, the best brain to teach to hundreds and thousands of people, as students. And I think that's a leveling of the world. And getting the best, you know, and it's not easy because it's a future, it's a change that have to take place. We have to learn how to do that. But I think young people can get used to that. Once they feel that we are providing the the platform, the opportunity. So this is the future that's going to happen. And I I'm really glad that, you know, we have the opportunity with this COVID nineteen virus. You you know, we are finding more and we're getting into an area that we're looking to the future and preparing our young people to have the value, have the attitude for young people to be prepared what the future citizen means and how they can, you know, well, take care of themselves, whatever the future may be. Hopefully, we'll never have COVID nineteen again. But who knows, futures uncertain. But even if it happened, we will prepare the young people that can manage them. They can overcome them. They can turn them into something even better. I think that's the bottom line. So I really admire and compliment, you know, you are taking this approach, looking at various you know, the not just academic, it's important, no question about it, because that's a practical consideration. We, that's number one, you know, but we need to also start looking at how do we provide and build the overall well being, the the aptitude, the value, the attitudinal approach. How do they work as a team? And so I really appreciate the the survey, the answer. In a way, I I feel that I want to just ask the city staff or maybe other council members. Perhaps in our survey that we give to our citizens, we need to ask some of those more insightful, more mental health, social, emotional, attitudinal questions so that we know how they feel about us. You know, I think that's quite different than just saying that, well, are we doing something for you? Are you satisfied with the concrete deliverables? But it's the whole attitudinal thing. I think that's important for us to realize, you know, where perhaps, you know, we can fill some of the gap. So I I again, I don't want to go into all the specifics that, you know, upon the practical side. Because as a parent, I guess we probably can bore you to death with our personal preferences. But I think in general, you know, I I I'm really happy. And especially when talking about the survey being done planned by ASB seniors themselves. And that's another way of having them engaged in not necessarily just academics, but in, you know, be perceptive, being looking more in depth, what people feel about it, how people interact with each other with the students or teachers and students themselves. Well, I think this is a great thing. So the survey probably, you you mentioned that it's provided to parents and teachers as well. So I think this is excellent. I really appreciate it. I think we would like to learn more about it. And perhaps we can, you know, work together along that basis. So working together, no question. As Deputy Mayor and others mentioned, we definitely want to collaborate with you. We want to learn from you, we want to help you, support you in whatever way, because we serve the same people. The same student, same families, and the students will come back, become, you know, future leaders and community residents and citizens. So thank you very much for doing that for our future. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Lee.
Dr. Duran, I'll try not to take too much time here. The first one's kind of a rhetorical question, but I'm just wondering what your blueprint is for managing your schools during this unprecedented time. I can't imagine that there's any expert out there that can tell you how to do this. And I'm just, I I I'm just amazed at how well the Bellevue School District is managing. So whether it's a blueprint or an inspiration, I would be interested in knowing that. And then more specifically, I saw that the number of meals served is ramping up. And I'm wondering what the reason for that is, if you know, and if the childcare needs are also ramping up similarly.
Yeah. So first off, there is no blueprint. So I think from the very beginning, you know, I think just operating from our sense of, you know, our overall vision, mission and values, you know, like, because it's core to just, you know, who I am as a leader. So I think that has always been there. And then the priorities that we identified really is what we can commit to do is I think there could have been a hundred things we could have done during this time. But if we did a hundred things, I would have done well. So we kind of said, you know, what are like the twenty things that we know we can do really well. And so that's kind of what we have focused on. And, you know, I'm just grateful that we had some poor thinking about this. You know, we had actually talked about this way back in October, our safety team had really already been thinking around some contingency planning and what if scenarios. And then it got ramped up in January. So we were a little bit ahead of the game thinking around the what if scenario. And that's why I'm just really grateful that we were able to get some training now before, you know, we we actually closed. But the ironic thing right now, Mayor, is that there are, I won't name a company, but they're like, there's a company this week that's providing a webinar on, you know, what's it going to look like when you come back, you know. But the irony in that is that this is a company that's probably losing three billion dollars, you know, right now during this time because of the services that they provide to educational institutions. So so it's it's interesting to see how number of vendors companies have also tried to market at this time. And, you know, in some cases, take advantage of people. But we've just kind of been working off of our strong set of our our values that is in this work. And then I think the nutrition one, I think, one, we've done a much better job of getting the word out, really making sure that families understood. You know, what the guidelines were, and that really is for any family. And I think because we're also, like, we now have six grab and go sites, we only had three, you know, four bits, so we doubled that number. And then I do think that there are more families that are starting to have need during this time. And, you know, Friday, this last Friday was actually superheroes. Nutrition service is superhero day. So we went out and visited. And you know, Friday is when we gave pizza out as one of our highest numbers, you know. So I think people are looking for some variety too, you know, just in terms of that option. But I do think the bigger issue is that there's more need right now. And and then childcare wise, I don't, I feel like we have, you know, really exhausted, you know, our process to reach out to families. I just think that there's more families that are home right now. And then I think that there are still, you know, quite a few families that, you know, really have a lot of fear around just, you know, being out and about, or, you know, very, you know, I totally understand that, you know. And so you know, we serve, you know, really up to about a hundred students, but we average about sixty kids a day in our site. And we went from having two sites down to one site. So I think that is being met right now.
Okay, very interesting. Well, thank you so much. Excellent presentation. We appreciate you taking the time to talk to us, but more importantly, to lead just a brilliant school district through these challenging times.
Very good. Thank you. Thank you for the opportunity. And just thank you for all the support and work that you all do.
All right, take care.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, Mr. Miyaki, what's next?
Yeah, we have one other item under the manager's report included in your council package is a management brief titled Special Recognition of Services. This evening, I've asked Fire Chief Hagan as well as Police Chief Mylett to share a recent very positive experience they had involving Overlake Hospital. And to leave this off, I'm going to turn it over to Chief Hagan.
Good evening, Mayor Robinson, Deputy Mayor Newenhouse, City Manager Miyaki and Members of Council. Thank you for the opportunity this evening to address you with an update about a recent event. And what I'd really like to do is spend just a few minutes setting up a video that we'd like to show you about a public event at Overlake Hospital. On April sixteenth, first responders from across King County went to fifteen local area hospitals to show the healthcare workers there our appreciation for their dedication and commitment during this COVID nineteen pandemic. These events were coordinated by a group of PIOs, that's Public Information Officers, that work under the umbrella of the King County Fire Chiefs Association. Our own PIO, Lieutenant Camry Olson of the Fire Department, organized the Bellevue event, which was held at Overlake, along with our communications team and support from Bellevue Television. They did a great job. Bellevue Fire Units and Bellevue Police attended the event at Overlake Hospital Medical Center. And we were also joined by units from Mercer Island Fire, Redmond Fire and TriMed Ambulance Company. So we drove over there and we gathered at Overlake Hospital Medical Center to be there just in time for their seven PM shift change. And we all parked outside the emergency room entrance to let them know just how much their service has meant to us. We had our apparatus lights on, we had some handmade signs and some banners on bed sheets. And we did some loud cheers. We even did sort of a weak effort at reviving the wave. Many of the hospital staff, including Chief of the ER, Dr. Eric Shipley, were able to come outside for the celebration of their efforts. But a lot of the others were on upper floors busy tending to their patients. We were really surprised and overjoyed by the signs of thanks they had made in turn for us that we could see up in the windows from down in the parking lot. We later heard that the timing of this event was much needed. The staff at Overlake had lost three patients that day, and the impact was really weighing heavily on them. It turned out to be a really heartwarming event. We felt that our time there was appreciated. And it just on our part, it was a simple gesture that we were really proud to be part of. Before I pass to Chief Mylett to say a few words, I would just like to extend a sincere thank you to all of you on the council who have supported the donation of personal protective equipment we call PPE, particularly respiratory protection in the form of masks. The outpouring of support from the community has just been really, really appreciated. The equipment has been used, been put into service and is really positioning us well now and into the future. With that, I'd like to virtually hand the microphone to Chief Mylett to say a few words.
Thank you, Chief. Mayor, Council, Mr. Miyaki, again, thank you for allowing us to spend some time with you this evening. You know, when when people think about first responders, the first group that often comes to mind are police officers and firefighters. And it is true, we respond to critical incidents in the community and we are first to respond to emergency situations. But during this pandemic, healthcare workers have been and continue to be front and center. What hospital personnel have gone through these past months is unimaginable and incredible. They are true heroes, the doctors, the nurses, and all the support staff from the aides to the technicians and the cleaning crews. Think about the cleaning crews that have to go into these hazardous conditions and and make things safe. I think we're all in their debt. Again, when you think of the front line, you don't often think about grocery workers. Where would we be without them? I know as I've gone through the grocery, into the grocery store, seeing them out there providing the essential goods and services that we're all relying on. Or they deliver to us through curbside pickup or at our doorstep. I think we've all come to appreciate these workers much more than before the pandemic. And how about all the other essential operators who are working to keep our city operating? The city of Bellevue Park Rangers are out every day patrolling the parks, utility workers and transportation teams are also on the front lines, making sure the city operates smoothly. I know I'm probably forgetting some some groups and I apologize for that. But I know we all appreciate their dedication and commitment to serve. And how about after hearing Dr. Duran's presentation tonight, the dedication, commitment and innovation of our teachers and school administrators to educate and to take care of our kids in this new environment? Certainly, it's admirable to say the least in its incredible work. One last group I would like to acknowledge is the Bellevue community itself. Since the beginning of the COVID pandemic, and not surprisingly, our residents have overall done their part to reduce the spread of the virus. Additionally, many have come forward with tremendous support for firefighters, police officers and hospital workers. As an example, Chinese American residents have donated thousands of pieces of personal protection equipment. These valuable pieces of equipment help to protect our first responders in the front line. Additionally, many people in our community have made financial contributions as well as lots and lots of food being delivered so our officers, firefighters and medical staff won't go hungry during their shifts. So while we had the great honor and privilege to express our thanks to the Overlake staff in person on April sixteenth, I know I speak on behalf of Chief Hagan, the Fire Department and the Police Department. When I say we are thankful and blessed to serve alongside some amazing coworkers and to serve a community is very special. And I gotta echo Jay's appreciation to the council for the support that you always have shown police and fire. And with that, I will turn the mic back over to Chief Hagan. Jay.
Thanks, Chief. Mayor Robinson, with your permission, we'd like to show this video now. And then the chief and I will stand ready to take any comments or questions you may have.
Perfect. Thank you.
You guys have taken the brunt of this and have had such a pivotal role in this whole crisis. And we're in the first responder community. Just wanted to take a few minutes to come out and make sure you feel a little bit of the appreciation because it's certainly there. Thank you, guys.
Thank you. As much as you're appreciating us, we want to say thank you. We think of ourselves as kindred spirits. We are brothers and sisters in this. And as you bring them in and we take care of them, we're all part of the same group. So thank you sincerely for what you do. And it is very much appreciated.
Okay, I'm crying. That was pretty great. Thank you for that. Okay. Councilmember Zahn and then Councilmember Lee, Councilmember Stokes, Deputy Mayor Newenhouse, Councilmember Barksdale, Councilmember Robertson, and then me. Councilmember Zahn, would you like to start? And can I ask everybody just to respect the three minute courtesy time limit that we have? But go ahead, Councilmember Zahn.
Yes, thank you for your tremendous work. I agree that our first responders are amazing along with our fire and police. And so that video is just amazing. And I really believe that it does take a village and that COVID doesn't stand a chance. and that COVID doesn't stand a chance. And we are going to beat this together. Um, so I want to thank our, our Fire Department for working with others in collaboration to, um, give thanks to Overlake Hospital. And I also, uh, Chief Hagan, want to take this moment to also recognize that today is International Firefighter Day. And so, um, thank all the firefighters, all your tough work and just thank you very much. We'll get through this together.
Thank you so much.
Thanks, Councilmembers Zon. Councilmember Lee.
Thank you, Mrs. Mayor. Oh, what can I say except to thank you guys? Uh, thank all the people, like you mentioned, uh, the healthcare workers and everybody who, you know, sacrificed tremendous life and wellbeing and all that, uh, you know, for others unselfishly. That's all I can say. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Lee. Councilmember Stokes.
Thanks very much. I think it's, um, what I was thinking about this is amazing. You do, both of you do such, and your, your folks do such a great job. And you do what you do and you know, know about this, you've been doing it for years. And bang, something really different comes along. And what's amazing is how you, you know, step up things, how you ramp up and how you work on something that is nobody's experienced, uh, a- and really make a fantastic contribution. And above that, the connectivity you make and the, the understanding that first responders are all kinds of people and having that, that celebration and thanks, um, and, and really was fantastic. It just shows and shows and how much I, I appreciate. And I know the council appreciates and the city appreciates the dedication and how compassionate, how smart and how, uh, progressive you are in terms of getting out and, and doing things and making things happen. And just amazing. It, it is very inspirational. Um, you have a hard job, but you make it seem easy. Thanks very much.
Thank you, Councilmember Stokes. Uh, Deputy Mayor Newenhouse.
Uh, thank you, Mayor. Well, uh, as I think we can all agree on medical professionals are risking their own health for the health of others. And I think everybody is very grateful for that. And I so appreciate the, the, the leadership of Chief Mylett and Chief Hagan for, um, highlighting just how grateful this entire city is for everything that these overlay heroes are doing for, for, for our city. Um, so the, the leadership that you continue to show, um, as Councilmember Stokes said, you make it look easy. And I'm just so proud of the, uh, the men and women of our police and fire departments. And, and, and again, their, their leadership and what a, what a thing to do. And, and thank you for taking that initiative. And, uh, I think anyone who sees that video, uh, much like our mayor might, uh, you know, shed a, shed a tear. But, uh, I think, uh, it'll, it'll also show a lot of pride in their city, um, for, for recognizing uh, all the heroes that were there that day. Thank you.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor Newenhouse. Uh, Councilmember Barksdale. You need to unmute maybe?
I'm sorry. Uh, I echo the sentiments that's already been, uh, shared and saying thank you for, for your service and for putting yourself out there during this, uh, pandemic to make sure the community is, is taken care of. And I also want to thank, um, a dispatches who helped with coordinating the, the work that you do as well. So thanks to all of you as first responders and our healthcare workers for what you did.
Thank you, Member, uh, um, Councilmember Barksdale. Councilmember Robertson.
Um, one of the things that makes Bellevue so special is how much we, how much we partner and cooperate with one another, whether it's the folks in the grocery store, our police, our firefighters, our paramedics, the, uh, men and women who work at the hospitals and medical offices, or the other, uh, it's such important, essential workers in our community. And it's one of the reasons I love living in Bellevue and why I'm so proud of the people of this city, whether they work for City Hall or not. And, um, just what a, what a wonderful, inspiring story and show of appreciation to the hospital. And, you know, as we've gone through this, the COVID emergency, it really shows and emphasizes the importance of having really high quality first responders and medical centers in our community. And as we, once we get through this and shake this off and we're facing the budget realities, um, and we're going to have a really pretty big budget hole. I really hope that we remember how much we relied on our first responders during this emergency in making those budget decisions because we just cannot afford to have any reduction in either of those departments. So I hope that my colleagues will join me with making sure that we keep that, that line in the sand for the, all of the members of our community, because this has just shown how much we rely on that. So thank you very much, Chief Mylett and Chief Hagan. And I appreciate the council. And you know, you always have our support and, uh, I'm really proud of our council, uh, for always backing you guys. So thanks.
Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Robertson. Well, as a healthcare provider myself, who has worked in hospital settings, there's just no better feeling than competent partnership. And, uh, what you described, Chiefs, with the police, the fire, the hospital workers, all the best of in their departments, working together. It's just, it is quite amazing. And I'm seeing it beyond that with our community members as well. Our community leaders are all stepping up to the plate and people, you know, we have such a diverse community from all around the world and everybody is offering support from all the sources that they have. And I, every week, the Indian Association of Western Washington, we have a representative who went through our, um, Bellevue Essentials Program, uh, now a graduate, who come, approaches me every week with supplies, offering them to, to the, whoever needs them most. So it's just, it is inspiring and it just makes me very proud to be a Bellevue resident. So thank you for showing this to us and send all of our, our applause and, and just gratitude to the people you work with.
Thank you very much. Thank you, Mayor.
Okay. Uh, so now we have our consent calendar and do we have a motion to approve the consent calendar?
I move to approve the consent calendar.
Second, Madam, Madam Mia.
Yeah, I know. I think we all know what's coming. I did a preamble here. But, um, yes, Councilmember Lee, as we all know, you, unfortunately, were cut off at the last meeting, um, at the end of your comments. And so
Thank you.
I'd like to give you a chance to finish your statement. Are you prepared to do that?
Yes, I am. Thank you. What an inspiring evening this is. We heard from our school superintendent about how we educate our young people. How wonderful, you know, that they are being taught.
Councilmember Lee, I am so sorry to say this, but you have to stick to the, um,
I am. I'm sticking. I'm sticking. So it's
To the comments that you were prepared to make.
Absolutely. Absolutely. The comment pertains to what's happened today. You know, of course, education number one. Number two, that may be even along with it. It's our public safety, our police and fire. That's what makes Bellevue, Bellevue. So I was cut off, uh, from my comments on the Economic Development Relief Work Report, uh, last week. Uh, and, uh, it pertains to the April 20th, 2020 special meeting. And, um, I would like to amend it to reflect that, uh, uh, small business in our city are important to our economic recovery. Uh, the city has weathered previous recessions, uh, because our small businesses stuck around throughout the bad times. And, um, I gave an account, a current example that, uh, our local small restaurants stayed open by donating a prepared hot meal box food to healthcare workers, the frontline workers, uh, donating prepared box food and also to families in need with contributions financially and also by community residents and volunteers. So I encourage, uh, that economic development staff to work with these groups. And so this is what I want, what I said, and I would like to include that because I was cut off on that statement. So thank you for considering that. And I hope to include this, uh, in the amended minute, which is in front of us for approval. Thank you.
All right. Thank you. So we have a motion and a second to approve the consent calendar. All those in favor, say aye.
With the, with the amendment?
Councilmember Lee, you're amended. I'm not sure we're amending the minutes as much as we are allowing you to state what you didn't state. And those will be in tonight's minutes.
Okay.
So we are approving the consent calendar as it, as it sits today. So all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. Thank you very much, everybody. Good job. I'm going to adjourn this meeting and we shall be together again soon. Thank you. Meeting adjourned.
We shall gather at the